In the absence of a quorum of the members of the Victorville City Council, the city clerk is calling to order the regular meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville and the city council sitting as a library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. There has been one item scheduled for the 5:00 closed session meeting. It has been determined that there is no longer a need to discuss this item in closed session. Therefore, the 5:00 closed session meeting is being canceled. The city council will proceed with a study session scheduled for 6:00 PM, and that will be followed by the regular meeting at 7:00 PM.
Called this special meeting to order. This is a special council meeting. It will become a workshop for an item that's on the agenda at a later time. This workshop is going to be held currently at the present time Tuesday, February 5 at 6:00. Call to order and roll call. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Kennedy, Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEagran.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. First, we have the public comment. I have no cards from anyone at this time. So I'm going to move on to the study session. This is an item that was on the regular council meeting. And I think although it was presented at the council meeting probably with an intention that it would be approved without too much, without any controversy and probably little discussion, several of the council members raised the question on, do we need this? Do we need it now? Is this a lot of money, knowing that salary surveys can be completed by firms for substantially less? And there were enough questions that we pulled it off the agenda. I wanted to talk to the staff, particularly city manager Doug Robertson. And he was prepared to give a much more in-depth explanation for the reasons. And we determined that in order for this council to conduct all of its business, open with the public watching in a transparent way, we've scheduled this study session. And I'm going to ask, if there's no comments from the council at the present time, I would ask Doug Robertson, city manager, to give a staff report, and then it would be open for questions from the council members.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor Cox, and members of the council, members of the audience. As you are all aware, we have had a series of reorganizations within the city of Victorville that over the last four years have resulted in essentially a massive reorganization due to layoffs and demotions. We've lost a total of about 250 employees, about half of those through layoff, and then a significant portion that were demoted through no wrongdoing, simply as part of a reorganization to cut costs and consolidate duties. I will tell you that most of the higher-level management people that had to endure that ultimately made a decision to leave the city and seek other employment. And we have had a number of other less experienced employees, but capable employees step up and take on some of those duties. So as a result, a lot of jobs have combined, a lot of jobs have changed. And we need to review that in order to be fair to the employees as well as be fair to the public. Benefits were frozen back about four years ago now. And in, over the last four years, several of our neighboring and similar agencies have had benefit increases of certain types such as to medical benefits to their employees, whereas our medical benefits have not increased in over 10 years now, including the four years that we essentially froze the benefits. But on the opposite side of things, things such as retirement contributions by employees, we froze our benefits, and that hasn't changed. Right now, the city pays a 100% of retirement benefits. Many other employers in the area have started requiring their employees to begin to pay a portion of their retirement benefits. And in fact, state law changed, became effective January 1st, that within the next five years, the city has to implement a program that has the employees paying at least half of their share of the retirement benefits. That issue is finally beginning to be settled out a little bit in rulemaking at CalPERS, but it's still somewhat unclear as to what that ultimately will look like. But it is something that has to be addressed within the next five years. So looking at the fact that we had tremendous change, tremendous turnover, tremendous change in some of our employees' duties, we felt that since we have not done a full classification and compensation study, we wanted to do that in order to be fair to the employees and to members of the public who ultimately pay our salaries. So the intent is to try to essentially establish a new baseline for all employees and classifications. We did a request for quotations, excuse me, not quotations, request for qualifications and received, I think it was six responses. We had a small committee review all of those responses for the firm's abilities to perform the duties. Ultimately, the firm that's on the agenda tonight, Public Sector, was selected as the best firm in the opinion of the raters. And we, at that point, following our RFQ procedures, we then opened the cost portion of their proposal. The cost portion was in line with what we anticipated to be the cost. I do understand that a typical classification-compensation study would be likely somewhat less than this, but this one is not typical. This one will study literally every position in the city. It will rewrite our job descriptions to the extent that that's needed. It will study literally every single benefit, including incorporating or assisting us with incorporating those changes in state law. It includes, and I'll just highlight a few of the sections that are in the agenda item tonight, a job analysis questionnaire for all employees. It'll include a desk audit or field observations for each and every classification throughout the city. If there are 20 people in a single job classification, then they would not need to necessarily audit every single person's job, but certainly a representative sample. They'll determine whether or not the position is FLSA exempt or non-exempt. I already mentioned updating all the job descriptions. Another key area is that was, I thought was fairly novel in their presentation, was that they will identify competitive employment areas for the survey. A lot of times, people look at just simply the size of the city or some, you know, single determining factor as to who to compare against. And what I thought was unique was that they'll look at where are we recruiting from? So who is our competition? And even more importantly, was where are we losing employees to? For if our employees, any of that have left, happen to be going to another city more often, then they will look at them as our competition. They will then survey all the salaries for those, what they, working with management staff, determine to be the competitors, and all the benefits as well for all positions. Then the rest of it is, you know, sort of standard class and comp study things. They'll develop a plan based on those surveys, allowing for internal equity between departments, between positions, so that there's fairness across the board, and also factoring in external competitiveness with the other agencies who we may be losing employees to. And then they'll assist with, of course, fiscal impacts to the extent that there are, and assist with setting up an affordable salary competitiveness policy. The intent of this is not to show that our employees are underpaid or overpaid. It's merely to look at exactly where they're compensated compared to similar agencies and bring that study back to the council for further direction. That's the extent of my verbal presentation. There's a lot more information in your agenda, and I'm happy to answer any questions to the best I can.
Yes. My concern, and I want to first start off by saying that I completely agree that all of these things are needed within the city because of the massive restructuring and reorganizations that have gone on in the layoffs. And I can say with experience from working with a VVWA that I work closely with Victorville in checking their benefits, their salaries, and doing compensation studies constantly at where I work, that Victorville is definitely under in many, many areas. But I think my concern was regarding this is that, that... I think that this could be done in-house through the HR department. And I understand, you know, that there's been massive restructuring and the recent resignation in that department. I guess my question would be, is there any plans to hire an HR director?
There are no plans to hire an HR director. I will be coming forward, assuming budgets are looking okay, with another proposal for next fiscal year to look at recruiting again for the deputy city manager position, which actually effectively replaces the HR director, the IT director, and the finance director positions. That was one of the reorganizations. Unfortunately, we were unable to fill that position previously. The, one of the reasons why we, I'm not comfortable doing this in-house is because it is such a large study. But also, having experience with other agencies, I'm trying to avoid the appearance, and a lot of times it is simply appearance, that a division of your peers has some influence over your compensation. So the actual committee, if there, to the extent that there is one that works with this consultant, will actually be myself, the assistant city manager, and the department heads, with assistance from HR for informational purposes, but not direction from HR. Because when we get to the end of the survey, you know, my experience in the city of San Bernardino was that some classifications were considered overpaid and some were considered underpaid. And the ones that were considered overpaid took great umbrance with the department that was involved in the study and sort of blamed them for that work. And I'm trying to avoid the potential for any interdivisional squabbles, if you will, or, you know, any undue influence that HR may be believed to have.
You know, I also wanted to see if this study was going to cover... Because I know that there was a lot of transferring and just putting people anywhere they could. And if there's going to be a study to show that their experience and their education is a fit for that position.
To the extent that they, you know, change any job descriptions, certainly that would be a consideration as far as looking at the incumbent, who is in that position. The job descriptions need to reflect what we need. And if the incumbent who's in the position either as a temporary assignment or even as a permanent assignment, if they don't meet those minimum qualifications at the end of this study, it's certainly something that we would need to address. Probably too early to try to make a determination as to what we might do. But certainly the intent is to make sure that this is a very clean sort of scientific study of what we need, not what we have.
I would also like to just say that maybe you can consider hiring someone specific to HR. A city this large really needs that focus in human resources to really stay on top of things. And I know that in just asking for information from the city, that they, you know, simple things as, you know, job descriptions and stuff like that are nonexistent or they're not even, nobody can find them. I mean, just that department really, really needs some structure. And then one other concern that I have is that the firm that was selected, and I don't want to, you know, say anything negative, but I know that there was, it was... There were some questions on that firm from other agencies that have hired that firm. So, and I just wanted you to be aware of that and to know that ahead of time. And Victorville actually had a problem with that firm at one time because they felt that they didn't like the results that they received from another agency. So I just wanted to, I know a lot of things go on and, you know, and there's a lot of things that are happening that you might not have remembered that. So I just wanted to bring that. But it definitely, it needs to be done.
Yeah, it does. And I have checked some of the references that they provided. It was not, I'm assuming your meaning, they did some work, I know, for VVWA. That was not one of the references that they specifically cited. But I did independently talk with a couple of other city managers who have been involved with the firm, and they did give a positive response. I can also tell you, I know there was some question about the cost. It was, I'll say it was close between second and, or first and second. You can see from the score sheet numbers that it was fairly close. Because the, if I recall correctly, the RFQ called for the cost of the survey to be 10% of the determining factor. We did open the cost envelope for the second-place firm to see how close it was, and they were actually nearly double the cost of what this firm had proposed. So I'm, I was actually very pleased with the cost because I expected it to be more when you look at the depth of which they're going to study each position. They talked about having 100, at least 100 job audits. That alone is going to be extremely time-consuming for them. I think the fact that they've used, if you look at the list of cities and other agencies within California that they've used, I think a lot of their research is probably done at this point. It's a matter of identifying those cities and much of the information they already have on file. So that probably allowed them to bid at a more competitive rate as a result.
They, they're definitely a lot cheaper than most of the firms out there.
I was surprised. I was pleasantly surprised when I saw the cost to be listed.
Just a couple of questions, Doug. Man, probably not even qualified to ask some of these questions, although I am the HR director in my firm, we have seven people. Haven't had any turnover in 10 years, so we're probably doing something right. But my question is, why are we doing this now?
It has a lot to do with the change in state law as far as the exact timing. But it also has a lot to do with the fact that we have, I can think of at least a half a dozen, if not 10 or 12, employees who are doing jobs that at least in some part involve work that their supervisor used to do. And they are not at that level. So, and that has everything to do with the turnover that we experienced over the last four years. And I've indicated to several employees, you know, we don't make promises with regard to positions and titles and things, but I've made references to the fact that we are going to do this and that rather than try to look at these one or two at a time, that would take forever. I wanted to bring in a firm that can fairly and objectively look at each and every position at the same time, so that I don't have to choose, you know, my limited... We have, right now, we have four full-time staff members in human resources. We used to have nine or 10. I don't want to have to try to pick and choose who gets their job looked at first. This way, we can bring in one firm, we can be done, and we can at least, crossing our fingers a little bit on this, since we had this delay with the continuance, my goal, my hope, would be that we can get at least some rough idea for what we're looking at as far as a potential fiscal impact in order to discuss it when it comes time for a budget. At this point, I think it's more hope than probability that we would be able to complete the study and get it implemented as part of the budget. But so long as we have a reasonable idea for what we're looking at, we can at least have a discussion about it when it comes time to talk about budgets in a couple of months.
Why would we not just look at the positions where there's change and not bother with the ones that are just the same jobs they've always been? There wasn't any change, there wasn't any absorbing of other tasks. Why not just look at the ones where there might be an issue?
I think that you're well over half of the positions in the city at that point, if you were to just look at those. I honestly do. I think, I see Mr. Cox's head shaking.
When we started the reorganization and downsizing, we had to seek a lot of legal help from personnel attorneys who were specialists in regard to protecting the rights of the current city employees because we had to avoid, without going into a real long explanation, we had to avoid laying off people that supervisors or department heads wanted to lay off. We had to literally take it out of their hands and reduce it to purely scientific on what the employees' rights were. We allowed bumping rights even though we don't have, we don't have that written in because it's only fair that employees who had been here for a long time. We had a situation where an employee had been promoted. We were going to eliminate the job that they had been promoted into. Well, this happened to several employees. So longstanding employees that had been promoted stood to get laid off if we didn't allow them to go back to the position that they were promoted from. It was a competitive exam and/or interview. But when that occurred, they also took on additional responsibilities from the old job, and the person in the old job then had to bump. And it, almost every employee in the city was affected in some way or another. Even employees who stayed in the same job got a reduction in salary and benefits, substantial. But at that point in time, there was no way to determine what a salary survey or benefit survey or total compensation study would show until we balanced the budget, reached the bottom of the recession, and reached a point where the city could financially determine, are you going to hire employees? And if so, where? And what happens to the employees that were here? And what jobs are going to be put together? It was a, it was a concern for not only to protect the employees, but the legal implications that could occur. We knew that it was probably not reasonable that when we hired back, you would hire and then put the employees back in the position and bump back up the ladders because too many people then began to leave when they, when they received a reduction in salary and benefits. So it's something that needs to be done. I was a little surprised at the cost, but the methodology that needs to be employed is good. Anyway, I just wanted to talk about that one issue. I'm going to save my questions till the rest of the council members have...
Let me follow that up if I could, Councilman Kennedy, real quick. As an example, when we started this process in summer of '09, we had 16 department heads. Seven of those positions were eliminated, and those seven individuals took effectively about a 40% cut to pay in benefits and moved down to an assistant director level or somewhere near that. Of those seven, six of those individuals, I believe six, just trying to think quickly here, have since left the city. Similarly, most of those positions, if they moved from a director level to an assistant director level, there was already a person in that position as an assistant director. Those individuals also bumped down to a management level position in order to make room for their former director. So just the amount of turmoil that we have endured, we really need a reset on our entire classification study or system.
We're going to spend $30,000 on compensation and benefits portion of this. And I'm wondering if they were to come back and say, everybody's 10% underpaid. I don't expect you're going to come to the council and ask for 10% pay increases because we don't have a budget that'll do that. So what is the point of knowing that everybody's 10% underpaid?
Well, you're absolutely correct. And I've been very open with the employees. I meet with them not quite quarterly, very close to quarterly, maybe three times a year. And I've expressed to them that, you know, if we were able to do this study and it comes back that it's a significant increase in cost, we don't have a way to pay it. So we'll be talking again about, you know, can we, how do we, when do we implement it, if we ever do? That was one of the, that's one of the items that's in their task list that I did talk about. And it has to do with assistance with affordable salary competitiveness policy. Just because the salaries, if they're deemed non-competitive, doesn't mean that this council has to automatically, nor would I recommend that they simply automatically go up. It would be a very open, honest discussion. I'm sure we'll have lots of employees in the room. But there is no requirement that you pay them at whatever level this study shows, absolutely not.
Do you believe that there are imbalances or that people's compensation in relation to other positions or similar positions are somehow out of balance and that this survey might tell us that those need to be adjusted with perhaps no overall increase?
There's a potential for that. Being completely open about it, I think there are employees, some of them believe that they are underpaid. I think that they likely haven't kept attuned to some pay reductions in other agencies. There have been some of that. There has been some of that. So to say that I think there's imbalances from agency to agency, I'm not sure. I would not be at all surprised if it came back that many of our employees are underpaid. I'm honestly not. I would not be surprised by that. I think that on the whole, our employees or our classification structure is, ties together well enough that from employees from department to department generally are paid the same. Anytime that you do a study like this, there always seems to be a couple of outliers, positions that, you know, you weren't expecting them to have such a tremendous difference in the salary. And those are difficult to predict. A lot of times, it's in information technology because those fields tend to progress more quickly than others. But I hope that the council understands and the public and the employees understand that this is not an attempt to raise salaries. It's not an attempt to reduce salaries. It's not an attempt to increase or decrease benefits. And it's an attempt to reset our entire salaries and benefits so that we are competitive, fair to the employees, and fair to the public who pays our salaries.
If we conclude that we're not competitive and therefore someone could conclude that we're not fair to employees, but we're not able to do anything more, and it's two years down the road before we can seriously address, or three or whatever, increases, are we going to have to do this again?
We could potentially have to do it again, but it would be a much, much, much smaller survey, much, much easier to do.
I envisioned that the salary survey or the salary-benefit survey would be the last thing to do, that the consultants would do. First, they have to interview the employees, determine the work. Isn't that all?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct.
So that is what I agree that needs to be done. Now, the survey would then follow up after you do the work, but the survey would be the last thing you accomplish. If it was the first thing you did, it would be worthless in my opinion.
But under the scenario Councilmember Kennedy mentioned, if it comes back and we are non-competitive and, you know, the council wants to do something, but we simply can't right now, it... right now, it could conceivably, depending on budgets, be delayed for several years, just because there simply isn't the means to do anything. At that point in time, conceivably, you may have to resurvey. But a lot of this, for me at least, I think our benefits need some adjusting, something such as the amount of vacation time that our employees receive, I think is more generous than other agencies. I think that our compensation towards benefits is less generous than other agencies, and I don't want to adjust for something responding to the state requirement to adjust for per without looking at each and every benefit. I just think it's unfair to the employees to do that.
I just have, I just want to say that I do share Councilwoman Kennedy's concerns. I do know that it's important to get the structure correct, and I think that we need to really take into account, and what's going to mean a lot to me, because I can tell you right now, this survey is going to come back with massive increases, and like Councilman Kennedy says, we don't have the money for that. But maybe we can have a plan to get there one day, you know, little by little, and that's where we're going forward with that. But what's going to make a lot of difference to me when I have to make that decision is if we get value out of this survey. And to me, the value would be is to ensure that there are recommendations in this survey to be made that ensure that the people that are in these departments have the experience and the education to hold those titles.
Understood.
So just keep that in mind.
Doug, just to be clear, this is not just the city. It includes Southern California Logistics Airport, the Water District, all the various entities that we're over. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, just to go to your point that you brought up earlier about how certain positions in IT might see higher salaries just due to their technical expertise, I would hope that we get out of this that same sort of information with respect to, you know, people that work at the airport versus people that work here at City Hall. I can't imagine that someone who's in charge of making sure that a 747 lands safely on our runway is the same as someone that's working here in a technical position. But, you know, I'm also concerned about a previous statement you made about how people across the organization in various different departments, if they serve in the same level, they're paid the same. That doesn't make any sense to me. I know in the private sector, we don't practice that. If I have someone in my commercial lines department, they're getting paid more than someone in my personal lines department, because they require a greater amount of technical expertise than someone in personal lines. So I just know that, you know, from the perspective of job description, technical expertise, educational requirements, alluding to what Councilmember Vias said, all those things have to go into that person's job description, what's required of them to be there, and ultimately, what they get paid for their job.
Right. And unless their jobs are effectively identical, they wouldn't necessarily be paid the same. You can benchmark, in fact, it's very common to benchmark positions against each other, even though they're not paid the same. It would be, you know, this position is benchmarked against this one, plus 5 percent or plus 10 percent, something like that, so that the overall structure makes sense and is fair across departments.
Would you consider then possibly just looking into vacation and benefits for the employees? Instead of the overall review?
If that's the council's direction, I think if we're going to do any study, my recommendation would be to study at all, because I think that's the most fair. But that, if the council wants to limit the study, we can certainly do that.
Since we're not in a position to increase salaries, I would say, you know, if we can adjust the vacation and the benefits, maybe that would be a start, that can be, you know...
My preference would be to make that decision when we have the information, and if it says that salaries are too low and it would recommend an increase, perhaps we can implement portions of the study that are related to those benefits, but delay any salary increases or potentially decreases until such time as we can afford them.
City Manager Robertson, I'm not sure about the salary survey, except that I know that we have a new law that requires employees to pay their portion of retirement. We have a five-year period, as I understand, to have that implemented.
That's correct.
But meaning, knowing that the budget is coming up and you have to have it implemented in the budget, we only have four years to get this done. And a half a year's gone by, almost a half a year's gone by before we address the budget. One of the things that needs to be done is, first of all, there's some very good questions here. One of the questions that was asked about the Assistant City Manager position that you may indicate you want to recruit for, as opposed to having an HR Director, if this study goes forward, can they answer that question? Can they look at that particular question of cities with like size, like responsibilities, whether or not they have HR Directors, or that has been incorporated into an Assistant City Manager position? And would they answer the question, what is best for this city?
That's certainly something that they would take a look at. It might take a little bit, they might take a little bit different approach to it. Their approach would be to compare, we currently have a Personnel Officer position that would compare to potentially HR Director positions in other agencies. But part of that comparison would be looking at their responsibility levels. If they ultimately report to a Deputy City Manager in this, in our structure, who assumes that role of HR Director, that's how they would approach it. But if you're asking to have them evaluate the actual structure of the city from a sort of a management and reporting tree, I'm sure that's something that they would be happy to do for us.
Another question. This is an all-inclusive proposal. Is it possible, well, let me back up, in regard to the employees' retirement, they're going to take it, it's going to be a requirement that their salary be reduced by the amount that goes into the employees' PERS share, which is, I believe, seven and a half or eight percent. Is that correct?
It's eight percent, but there's no, the law doesn't require you to do anything with the employee's salary. What it requires is for the employee to pay their half, their share. And where that is, was confusing last I looked at it, I know many agencies have started implementing this already, was what is the definition of 50 percent of the employee's share? Is it 50 percent of the total cost, or they pick up what's known as the employee cost and then split the city cost, the employer cost, 50/50? And I don't know, maybe Councilmember Vias has looked at this more closely, but I don't know that that is, has a final determination through the rulemaking in purpose.
And my final question, before I interrupted myself, this is an all-inclusive proposal. Is it possible for you to sit down with public-sector personnel consultants and break this down into the first task, to do all of the studies for the employees, to ensure that the job descriptions are in the right place at the right time with the minimum requirements or the requirements to fit the job, and get a cost for that, leaving the salary-benefit survey as a separate item? And then, depending upon what the study shows, council could make a determination on that? Or is that rebidding the whole thing?
Their proposal includes estimates for each of the major tasks. That is the small agenda here, well, it's listed as page 12 of 12 in their proposal. And the total compensation and benefit survey is $30,000 of this study. And the very next item talks about them being flexible with regard to the work plan. If we didn't want to implement portions of the work plan, they allow for that. If ultimately, you parse it out and ask them to come back kind of a second time to do that, rather than doing it at the same time they're here, it would likely be at a higher cost, because they have to make additional trips. They can do a lot of this all at the same time in one interview with each employee classification. They are certainly flexible to it. I will say that staff is flexible to whatever direction we receive from the council, but my recommendation would be to do the whole thing.
If other questions?
One other thing. When Jim came back as City Manager three years ago, and then you took over that job about a year and a half ago, both of you did some reorganizing, and I think yours may have been even more extensive. So the structure of our city organization may be different from other cities. When they do comparisons, are they, and try to create a city of Victorville that is comparable to the town of Apple Valley or city of Rancho Cucamonga, or are they somehow...
No, they'll base it on responsibility level, really, and so they can make those comparisons even though the structure isn't identical. They can also, and I've seen them, not necessarily this firm, but I've seen other firms, make adjustments for, you know, if in Victorville, this certain department has less responsibility, they may compare, but then kind of give a discount to that, to address that slightly lesser responsibility that you might see in Victorville. In Victorville's case, I can tell you that what was, as I mentioned, the 16 department heads, I know that our Director of Public Works at this point in time, Sean McGlade, is doing the, at least has the responsibility for, I don't want to ever say that he's doing all of their work, because he has others that assist him with that, but he has the responsibility for what was, the Director of Public Works, the Director of Engineering, which was his old title, the Director of Water, and at least a significant portion of the Director of Utilities position. He's doing all that as one person with one salary. So I would anticipate them saying that our, at least senior, most senior, I would call them executive-level staffer, probably have greater responsibilities than in many other cities. Just to be clear, this study isn't planning to study, to look at my salary, the Assistant City Manager salary, or even the department heads that are already on contract. This isn't an attempt to change those contracts in any way.
That speaks to the talents and skills and abilities of Sean McGlade, no question about that. It also speaks, though, to the kind of structures that accumulate over time when money is not much of an object and...
Absolutely.
I want to guard against that. Our job is to be lean and mean and streamlined.
In having personally spoken with over 100 employees, one-on-one in large part, or in small groups, who I had to notice, give them the notice, Mr. Cox went through this as well with me, that they were being laid off, I never, ever want to have to do that again. So let me assure you that as long as I'm here, I will be very frugal with the number of positions that we bring on, especially during boom times. It was a very painful process for those employees, and it was a very painful process for the management employees who had to participate in those difficult decisions.
Questions from the council members? This, ladies and gentlemen, is a study session. We have agenda item. There's no action to be taken at this time. There is an agenda item on the identical subject matter later in the agenda. When we begin our regular council meeting at 7:00, we will come to this item for an action item, but there's no action at this time, so no further questions.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for just a moment? There was one question I was anticipating, yeah, I did, I'm sorry, that in case a member of the public, or if you think of it, you know, in the interim before the 7:00 meeting starts, the city, all employees are on 10 percent furlough, and so, meaning that they work 10 percent less hours per week than a, you know, normal 40-hour-a-week position, and they're paid 10 percent less as a result. This survey very clearly will factor that in, so that you won't end up with salaries being 10 percent lower in Victorville as a result of the furlough. Those furlough hours will be factored into the total compensation, so that you are going to get a comparison of apples to apples. They're not going to take our 36-hour salary and compare it to a 40-hour salary, just in case that comes up. Sorry for interrupting.
There's no further action. We'll adjourn this special meeting at this time. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order for the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM on February 5, and I would ask that, oops, hang on, just a second. Reverend Karen, come forward for the invocation, please.
Father, we thank you in the name of Jesus. We ask you right now, in the name of Jesus, to bless this meeting tonight, Lord. We ask you, Lord, for wisdom, knowledge, and instructions. And Father God, we ask you in decision that has to be made, if any man lack wisdom, he shall that you give it to him liberally. So we pray for wisdom tonight, Father, and we pray for your peace tonight, and we pray for all understanding. In the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth, I pray, amen.
Councilmember Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Here.
Councilmember Vias?
Here.
Mayor Protan McAgron?
Here.
Mayor Cox?
Here. Normally, we have a closed session, and then the city attorney will announce the actions of the closed session. That closed session was canceled, and so, do we have any revisions to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
There are no revisions to the agenda tonight.
At this time, we have public comments, and you're invited at this time at the public comment to speak on items. If you have an item on the agenda that you're going to speak on, you have the right to speak now and on the item, but we would request, since almost anyone who speaks on both says the same thing, and you would be on record, to hold those comments until that agenda item comes up. At the present time, at this time is the public comment period, and I have three cards. I'll take them in the order that they were handed. If there's any additional individuals who want to speak, you need to fill out a card that you can get from the city clerk. If this is it, we will proceed, and the first individual is Mr. Jerry Laws.
I'm glad we got through this election. You all got elected, and we'll have to work with you. We have no choice, do we? All right, I'm Jerry Laws, and I want to say, and I will give paperwork for all of the individual ones, I'm only going to give you certain parts of this militia. The U.S. Code Title 10, Section 311 is a militia. It's a, the paper I'll give you will be the Legal and Aspects of the Militia. The militia was started in 1792, and I think in May that year, it was passed the first or second, first time, or second time they met in Congress. I want to read this part real quick, like... I want to read this part real quick, like, also while we're looking up the paperwork here. Indio County is using their gold mine and silver mines to pay their county bills. We own Calico. Calico was given to us by Walder Knott in 1966, if I remember right. And I used to walk Walder Knott, and Missus Knott around on their birthday once in a while, back in the 50s and 60s, when I belonged to Ghost Patrol, when he gave us a building down there for our historical cavalry unit, which we participated in the Battle of Baccacho Pass 50 years ago. Anyway, we own the mine. Don't mess with the ghost town, that's a historical monument. It was the number mine, number-one mine in the 1880s, before the silver prices, silver went down, and it wasn't worth it anymore. Silver's high enough, they use it in our cellphones and everything else, silver's high enough, there's no reason why we can't use, and I already talked to our new supervisor, and I also talked last year over the TV thing we have up here, to talk to the one county down there, on supervisors, on the silver mine. There's borax mixed in with the silver, it's all there. If we own the silver mine, or any gold mines around there, we should process them and use that money to pay county bills, because that's what the county does first, since it was given to the county, and then pay some of the city bills, maybe most of them. In my personal opinion, they should give a little bag of silver to every individual person only of San Bernardino County. All right, comment here, where we go here. I understand how these definitions have arisen. One must first understand that the framers of the U.S. Constitution had in mind, for the new republic they had created. They allowed for a standing national army, but insisted that it be kept small, and although it might be the first force to be called out, and the only force to be sent abroad. The primary defense of the country was to the duty of the ordinary citizen, who would be kept in state of militia, readiness at all times, while leading their normal lives, who would be called up in to repeal invasion, suppression, resurrection, or execution of the laws.
10 seconds.
Or a limited period. Pardon me?
10 seconds. You have 10 seconds.
10 seconds! George Putnam used to give me at least five, but that's all right. Okay, let's make it simple. Any chief of police, we have three chiefs of police. We have, I mean, we have a chief police in Milwaukee, we have a sheriff in Arizona and Oregon, who says we will not obey any orders that come out from the White House that are unconstitutional. Every citizen in here is a militia. They should have an M-16, M-14, whatever they want, at their home. And then you have a citizen, in other words, you have a city that is militia, you have a county that is militia, and you have old folks made are in the voluntary militia. Keep that in mind, and go to that section I said, what'd I say, U.S. Code Title 10, Section 311?
Thank you, Mr. Laws.
Look it up.
Thank you.
And the only reason a sheriff exists is because you and I hung our rifles over the fireplace and said, "We want a sheriff."
Thank you. Next card that I have is Mr. Charlie Gaspere. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gaspere. The next card that I have is Kathy Lee.
I am an investor here in Victorville, and recently I purchased about four properties for rental, and...
Could you speak right into the microphone, please? Thank you, now go ahead.
And so far already, I have two problems with the city of Victorville Water and Sanitation outstanding bills, where my tenants don't pay, and as an owner or landlord, it all comes to me to pay it all, so if I want to rent it again, which I feel really ridiculous, because recently, one of my property, just flat, without saying anything. And then, so I came to here, City, on January 14th, and that was the day that water was shut off, and I came to find out what's going on with the water bill, and I was able to get a copy of the current bill, and for five billing cycle, they have not been paid, I mean, tenant never paid, for five months. And city of Victorville Water and Sanitation didn't do anything. And I asked the clerk, "Why didn't you shut off the water, or let the landlords know what's going on with it?" And she says, "They have some system problem for shutting off, and they're sorry, and there's nothing they can do." And so, I talked to the supervisor, I believe, her name is Yulima, and she says the same thing, and she's just sorry, but there's nothing they can do, and I was just going to have to, it was kind of threatening. You know, if you don't pay, then you're just not going to have water for your next tenant. I don't understand how the system works this way, because this has happened already a second time to me. And first time, I just ignored it, you know, passed by, and since this is the second time, first time was I had to pay like over $600 water bill, just because I'm the owner, and this time, there's outstanding bill of $399.81. Is there any the city could do about it?
The city council has this time set aside for individuals to address any item, but since it's not agendized, the Brown Act prohibits us from having a discussion, we are restrained to discuss those items that have been agendized. I will ask Mr. Doug Robinson to have the department head contact you, they can make a determination if it can be handled by staff, or if it's agendized, but we cannot answer your questions or have a discussion on that at this time.
Okay, just for your information, and I'm not the only investor, I have many friends, I'm originally from Orange County, and I have many friends from Orange County invested a lot of properties here, and they are all having same problem, and they live in Orange County. So, I'm the only one who came here to express myself, on behalf of myself, and also on behalf of my friends, who's having same problems. And also, when I spoke to the clerk, clerk told me that they are having so many problems with that. So, all these tenants here in Victorville, it seems like they are intentionally not paying so many months of the bill, because they don't have to pay. And the city of Victorville, they just waive the fee and just go after the landlord to pay for it, and I don't really feel this is fair. And who wants to invest here, then?
Miss Lady, your time is up. I gave you additional time because I interrupted you, but again, this is a public session for individuals to speak, but we, it's not agendized, we cannot discuss it. I'm going to refer you to the staff. Thank you very much.
Okay, so will I hear from somebody about it?
You will hear from someone.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, members of the public, just as an information item, I don't know this case specifically, so I can't speak to it, but the council did a little over a year ago approve a change in policy that would put that responsibility very specifically on the homeowners, in order to influence them to make sure that they were renting to good renters. I remember some fairly heated public discussions about that very issue. So, that was a decision made by the council, probably 12 to 18 months ago. With regard to a bill not being paid for five months, I do know, we sent out several notices to our customers, but we did have a time in the spring where we changed our billing system from one system to another, and we had about a three- or four-month period that effectively, we didn't have a way to issue a shut-off notice. We knew that it would be painful to go through kind of the catch-up phase of that. I don't know that this case specifically was during that time. The reason for that was because the old system was being phased out, the new system was being phased in, and the new system needed to track those late bills, starting from the day it was implemented. So, we had about a three-month period that we simply had no way to issue shut-off notices. We did everything we could to make sure that people paid on time, and we are playing catch-up with that. But that's something that was kind of a one-time occurrence. It shouldn't be something that occurs on a regular basis. But with regard to the other issue, this was a very, it was a very conscious decision of the city council to put that responsibility on the homeowners, to ensure that the renters that they bring to our city are good renters.
I'll ask, do you follow up on this? Thank you very much. Item four, the consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there's no items at this time. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda five, consent.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item six, written communications, request to approve Amendment Four to the Security Service Contract for SCLA, increasing the contract amount from $97,680 to an amount not to exceed $129,362.48.
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Question.
This is a extension through January 31 of 2013, so if I'm understanding it correctly, it's expired.
That's my understanding.
We're just doing it after the fact, ratifying what was done.
That's my understanding, Senator.
Correct. That is my understanding as well. If you'd like a staff presentation, Sophie Eskebark can come down, she's the Economic Development Administrator.
Well, I don't need an explanation, am I right about that?
That's correct. It ended on the 31st of January, and the new security company started on January 15th, so this covers that overlap period.
We need to ratify that.
Yes.
So, why did we, why is it late? That period, why are we doing this after the fact?
We had gone through an RFP process over the last couple of months, and we were just able to get the new company approved on the council agenda for the one meeting held in January due to the holidays. That's when we realized, and we asked for an overlap at that time, but we realized that the other contracts still needed an additional 30 days, and so, we brought it back at the next available meeting.
When we, I know we were beefing up security at the airport, is that going to cover all of the squatters that are there?
We had actually increased, under the old company and under the old contract, we had increased patrols on, the squatters are usually on the off-airport properties, the old base housing and the old buildings. There was a significant cost associated with that, in fact, that's part of the reason there's a little, we ran out of funds and are asking for an additional appropriation. We did that back in the summer months. It was becoming too costly, and instead of paying for manpower, we actually went with a company that has a unique way of boarding up the properties with metal grates, and that has, and it's a lot less expensive than actually paying for extra security patrol. So, we went with the less expensive alternative and reduced that extra security patrol. The main focus of the new company is the restricted area, the on-airport property, patrolling the assets that are protected and covered, you know, under the FAA.
Sophie, don't go away, I've got a question on number seven, so just...
Okay.
Save yourself the walk.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next, item, item seven, successor agency to the RDA, request to authorize the execution of the Economic Development Administrator of a substitution of trustee in deed of reconvenance regarding the following loan, Watts Automotive Group. And Mr. Kennedy had a question.
Do we need to pull that? It's a consent calendar, I just have a simple question. Is it just the change of title from the former RDA to the successor agency?
This is actually a substitution of trustee in a reconvenance of the loan that was made to Watts Automotive Group for Victorville Motors back in 2008. They actually, the city council at the time, approved a $200,000 loan to that auto dealer to help them keep their doors open. The loan was, the help was actually, it actually helped them to keep their doors open. As you will recall, we actually lost the Kia dealership at the same time. This loan helped Victorville Motors, they started on a repayment plan, and they made every payment on time, and they were actually able to, I believe it was on the 19th of January, 17th of January, they were able to actually send in the full amount due and pay off the loan. So, this is authorizing the reconvenance of the loan.
This was just our security interest, and we're releasing our security now that they've paid off the loan.
For the record, they have paid the loan in full.
Paid in full.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Victorville, next item is the, item number eight, Victorville Water District. This is a public hearing. Public hearing called to hear arguments for and against changes to the Victorville Municipal Code, Chapter 10.04.040, Subsections T and 1, by introducing and waiving the further reading of Proposed Ordinance Number VWD-006, entitled. And, Madam Clerk, does that have to be read at this time or not?
That would be read at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. If no comments from the council, is there any staff presentation? I'll open the public hearing on item number eight. I have no cards for anyone to speak on that item, I don't see anyone coming to the podium. If there's no one to speak on item eight, I will close the public hearing. Questions of staff? Ready for a motion?
In ordinance of the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District, amending Title 10 of the Victorville Municipal Code, one, adding Section 10.04.040D6, providing for commercial landscape irrigation connections, and two, revising Section 10.04.040T1, to allow will-serv letters to be approved by the authorized administrator of the district. Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias, to waive further reading and introduce Ordinance Number VWD-006. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda is written communications. The city attorney has indicated that he has a comment on items number nine and 10.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. I would request that we pull both items. While item number nine is in relatively good shape and ready to be executed, it is somewhat related to item number 10, which deals with the R-Cube project and the MWA. I have been in discussions with their attorneys, and I have some concerns with respect to the indemnification provisions in the R-Cube agreement, which provide significant exposure, I believe, to the city of Victorville. And until I can get that resolved with their attorneys, I'd like to pull both items and bring them back once we can get that issue resolved.
Mr. Attorney, are these to be pulled and scheduled at a later time, or continued to the next regular council meeting?
We can just re-agendize them. I would just pull them at this point, and make sure that I have the ability to get the language that I'm looking for into the R-Cube agreement.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation would be to simply pull it at this point. This is the second time it's appeared on our agenda, can't seem to get this issue worked out in a timely manner. Rather than re-agendizing it on a every-two-week basis, we'd prefer to simply wait until we have it worked out, and then we'll put it back on the agenda.
Okay, I see no reason for that. Well, this matter simply dropped because there's no action required at this time, and it's not a public hearing item. The next item on the agenda is the Victorville Housing Trust, Consent Calendar, item number 11.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
Mayor, I'd like to pull C and D.
Pull C and, did you say D?
D.
D, C and D. There's a motion and a second. With the motion, since there's a request by a council member to pull those two items and handle them separate, the motion then would continue, it can be withdrawn, or they can continue with the understanding that the motion would only affect A, B, and E. Maker the motion and the second, agree to that?
I agree.
They all agree, so vote on those items, and then we will immediately take up C and D.
Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries unanimously.
And Ms. Vias.
Okay. These individuals were given, given a loan, and then they want us to, they were supposed to pay it back, and they short-sailed it. Is my understanding, and then they want us to forgive their loan?
The loans are actually set up with a built-in forgiveness after 10 years. Per item D, I can, I can answer pretty easily that that's what's occurring, is after 10 years of residence in the home, the loan is forgiven, and that's, that's item D. Item C is slightly more complicated because of an issue with the redevelopment, changes in redevelopment law, so I'll ask Sophie Escobar to come up and explain that one for
That's correct. The program was set up in the early years to have loan forgiveness, as long as the homebuyer stayed in the home for 10 years, then they could, after 10 years, request that the loan be forgiven. It was, it was the actual structure of the program. So that is the case with Mr. Vasquez. For Mr. Johnson, it's a completely different scenario. Unfortunately, this is a case where the RDA dissolution law actually impacted one of our residents directly. In this case, this gentleman, as well as several others, had come to staff during the summer months when the cleanup legislation to the RDA bill, AB 1484, came out in late June of 2012. It created a lot of issues with real estate transactions. There was a lot of, many lawyers were debating the, how the legislation was supposed to be carried through, and in this particular case, this gentleman was going to ask us for a subordination because he wanted to refinance his first mortgage in order to lower his interest rate, help him stay in the home. He was, had a decreased income and an increased household since he got the loan, and he was trying to do what he could to reduce the monthly payments so that he could not lose the home. Normally, under those situations and those circumstances, we would request, or we would approve a subordination request, as long as the homebuyer isn't cashing out in any way. Those don't happen nowadays because nobody has equity to cash out. Unfortunately, because of the dissolution, we couldn't bring a subordination to this board. There was debate on which, which legal entity could approve that, whether or not it had to go through the state process rather than this, rather than this board here, than the oversight board, than the state. There was just a lot of confusion, and escrow companies and title companies, in some instances, were not doing anything if it had RDA related to it. Couldn't close on a property. We had to cancel a couple of escrows, for example, where homebuyers were trying to buy an RDA-owned property, and days before they could get in, they had to cancel. So we could not do anything with this gentleman. We couldn't approve his subordination request. We couldn't bring it to you. We were kind of in limbo for a couple of months. Those issues were resolved about October and November, when we brought the items to this board and asked for all of the, we had received the state's approval and asked for all the housing assets of the former RDA to be transferred to the newly-created Victorville Housing Trust. So we no longer have those issues. He came in during that middle period where we couldn't do anything, so we told him his only option was to pay us off. And of course, he mentioned the fact that if I'm trying to lower my interest rate and trying to stay in my home, I don't have the money to pay you off. So we told him, come back to us with what you can offer. He just came back in January and had saved up, be $3,600, and was saying, okay, I saved it up, now can, can I pay you off? And to honor the fact that it wasn't his fault, he couldn't ask for a subordination at the time, which, if he would have been granted a subordination, he wouldn't have had to pay anything off. We recommended that his, his request for the short payoff, to pay off the RDA loan short, would be granted. In the case of a foreclosure, because we're in a second lien position, and these are things we considered, if he actually foreclosed, we would probably get nothing back. The second lien holder usually is kind of hung out to dry. So with all of those factors, and in all fairness to the homebuyer who was caught up in just a legal mess that was not anything to do, you know, it wasn't his doing, that's the reason that we recommended that. What most of the homeowners did that came to us at the time is they waited, and they've come back to council in November and December and January and asked for the subordination, and they didn't pay us off. This is very unusual.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't just, you know, giving the farm away. Okay. Thank you.
And just so the public is clear, I know the council is clear on this, these monies are monies that are set aside, were set aside by state law for low and moderate income purposes only. They couldn't be spent on other things such as police, fire. So this, this isn't city dollars that was being loaned. This was very specifically set aside by state law for low and moderate income households.
RDA money.
I have a comment. I understand that D is, is taken care of because of the earlier agreement that says if you continue to make your payments for a period of 10 years, that provision of that loan is, can be forgiven. This one isn't a 10-year period. It's, I was looking for a check stub or something to show that income has declined. I don't find it. I have a question that, I know banks have short sales. Banks also have insurance, so we don't. It, I, I am, I would have liked to have seen more information on this. I understand that when the RDA, when the state changed the law for RDA, that it created some problems, but everyone has had to deal with that. And I had problems with item C when I read it. I still don't have my questions answered. I think that my recommendation is that 11D should be approved and take the item separate. So as the chair, I'm going to take a motion for 11D. It was explained first. Approve of the request or deny the request. Ready for a motion on 11D?
Wait.
Is there questions? I'm sorry. Questions?
Yeah, so you're saying that you didn't get the information, so you don't want to approve that? Is that what you just said?
Well, if we handle it separately, we'll find out. I can't, I don't, I don't want to handle them together because there may be members of the council want to vote yes on one and no on one, so.
Oh, I get what you're saying. Okay. But just so I'm clear, D, he paid his bills for 10 years, and it's forgiven.
It's forgiven. That was part of the original agreement.
So he did everything that was required of him. Is that correct?
That's correct. That is correct.
All right.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias.
And this is on D?
D.
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I think I have a similar concern about the forgiveness. I guess I'd like to ask staff to, to take this one back and give us a better explanation of why this individual should be handled differently than everybody else.
I, I agree. The staff rec wasn't clear, so it would, it would make me feel more at ease.
Not necessarily opposed to it, I just would like a clear understanding of why.
I, I would agree. I'd like it clarified, and I'll also request that the, since the city is forgiving a debt that's duly owed them, I want to make sure that this does not constitute a gift to public funds.
It certainly does not. These are programs that, when they were put into place with low and moderate income housing funds, that most cities in California operated and operated what were called silent second mortgage programs. The, the city had an obligation to ensure that you had so many houses reserved for low and moderate income households. You had a fund, which was the Redevelopment Low and Moderate Income Fund, to help ensure this. It was a way to expand low and moderate income housing funds and to ensure occupancy of residences by low and moderate income housing funds for a certain period of time to meet with the state law requirements, and the 10-year requirement was what the state law required. They're not a gift to public funds, completely authorized by the redevelopment law.
I guess the only, the only question it raises in my mind, if I were one of these borrowers, and I realized that they just forgave half of, of one of these loans, I'd be in here asking for the same thing. So I just, I, there's.
Yeah. I mean, the redevelopment program at the time is somewhat like a grant program. What, what the city is seeking is to get a covenant that the property remain occupied by a low and moderate income household for a period of 10 years. The understanding is if they meet that criteria, then essentially they are, at that point, the loan is forgiven. These relatively small amounts, just to help gap financing these, the purchase of these homes.
I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure of the council. We can bring this item back at the next regularly scheduled meeting with, to address some of the questions that have been asked tonight, certainly.
I agree. It's a, it's a matter before the council. Do you want to vote on 11C, or do you want to pull the item off and refer it to staff?
Pull.
Pull.
Pull the item and refer it back to the staff.
Yeah, pull the item.
Thank you. We are now at the city council's portion of the agenda. This is a public hearing. Item number 12, a public hearing called here, arguments for and against amending Title Six of the Victorville Municipal Code by introducing and waiving further reading of the proposed ordinance number 2298. And I have no cards in front of me. Are there any questions from the council before I open the public hearing?
Yeah, I would like to have a little brief synopsis from the city manager on this.
And actually, I would call up the Director of Public Works, Mr. Sean McGlade.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
My, my, my only question really is, is this, are we asking to increase rates?
No. There's an existing drainage fee already established since 1993. This ordinance merely amends the existing ordinance that established that to get it current with certain requirements under the Constitution, Article 13, which Prop 218 was enacted in 1995. There was also language in the ordinance that required the city manager to do reporting every five years. That was never done. That was intended to be the means by which it, rates could be increased, but we don't believe that that can be done and still meet the requirements of Prop 218, so that language is all getting eliminated, and we're deferring to any rate increase would be pursuant to the Prop 218 requirements.
Mr. McGlade, is it fair to say this is basically an administrative cleanup item?
Yes, that would be.
Excellent.
Okay.
No further questions. I have to open the public hearing. No one speaking. Close the public hearing. Time for a vote for the council.
I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville, amending Title Six of the Victorville Municipal Code, revising Sections 6.30.010C and 6.30.020A,B, and rescinding Sections 6.30.020D, 6.30.030, 6.30.040, and 6.30.050, so as to clarify the usage of and manner in which fees for storm drainage facilities are established consistent with Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McAcrin, to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2298. Councilmember Vias, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 13, consent calendar.
I'd like to pull G.
Request by Councilmember Vias to pull G. Any other requests from council members? That was B?
B.
G. G. I had made a request to the city manager earlier. I've gone through the commercial demand schedule. I think that there needs to be some explanations, particularly as it relates to the cost that we are incurring legal fees, as it relates to the SEC. And I don't need that now, but I would hope that this would be prepared and submitted to this council as soon as reasonably possible, so that not only the council members, and particularly us two new council members and the general public, know the tens and hundreds of thousands of dollars we're spending on this item. It's, I think the public needs to, to know about that.
Mr. Mayor, I can speak to that, at least for this, this agenda. On the agenda is an item regarding payment to our city attorney's firm, the amount of $116,000. Of that amount, $38,587.50 is related to the SEC matter. $18,680.50 is related to La Masona-Squali interchange. Certainly, La Masona-Squali interchange is in large part being wrapped up very, very soon with regard to any settlements still remaining to be negotiated, so that would be closing out very soon. The SEC will not give us any timeframe on the extent of their work, or how much longer it may take, at risk of inviting a jinx. Not that I believe in them. I can share that it certainly feels, maybe it's just desire, but it certainly feels like they're getting close to wrapping up, but they won't say that, and we don't actually have any way of knowing. So that $38,000, unfortunately, is an awful lot of document review, and also representing the city before the investigators at the SEC.
Thank you. Okay, this is a consent item with only one item that has been pulled, which is item G, so a motion to approve consent calendar, omitting item G.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Councilmember Vias.
In item G, regarding the perma joint powers of authority, I'm not familiar with this, but I just want to make sure that I'm clear. So the cities form their own committee for the workers' compensation?
Yeah, this is the Public Employees Risk Management Association. It's a JPA of, of a variety of cities that we are involved in and share risk, much like, I'm sure you guys are involved in something like that at VBWR.
Uh huh. And so there's no cost to the city, even if there's travel required or anything like that?
The, our representative on that board has been our contract risk manager. I'm sure there may be a very small cost associated with his attendance at those meetings, but there's no cost to, to be simply involved, no.
I see. Now, does our contract risk manager, is he billing us for this time for this committee?
Yes, he does bill us. It's my understanding that he does bill us for the time that he spends at this committee.
So there is a fiscal impact?
There is a fiscal impact that would be covered as part of his contract that comes before the council on a regular basis. It's not because of his presence on the board. It wouldn't be listed separately necessarily.
Uh huh. So does his presence have to be on this board?
He is our risk.
Could we defer to another city that can maybe pay, or that's in better shape, that they can put someone on that board? Or do we have to put somebody on that board?
I believe that we have to have a representative on that board as a member. Certainly, we could, I can check into that. I'm not sure that level of detail.
All right.
No further questions?
Jim, you said they do have to have one because it is a J.
It is a joint powers entity, which we are a signatory to, and therefore, we have a representative on the board.
Oh, okay.
We can designate a staff person, a council person, or a contract person. I haven't looked at that, but when we were naming individuals to boards, I don't recall that being on the list, perma-board. Madam City Clerk?
I don't believe that was, no, because of it not being one of the council members representing the city on the board.
Okay, because it wasn't appointed by one of the council members, it's a city action. Look at that and see if we needed action from the city on that.
Do that.
For maybe the possible next meeting. Okay, chairs open for a motion for item G.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Cox, on agenda item number 14, I'm going to stand because it involves Lamar, and my corporate attorney as well, personal attorney, represents Lamar.
We are at written communications, agenda item number 14. Is the city attorney going to make a?
Certainly. This is basically a procedural issue that is requested or is contemplated as part of the settlement agreement. We have settled all of these cases. We just need to file some documentation with the court, and we need your approval to do that, to facilitate the settlement agreements.
Is this related to the Nisqually interchange?
It is, and it's the settlement of the Eagle Properties, the Lamar Properties, and the Porter Properties, all of which previously have been before this council and approved by this council.
Thank you. Chair, is there any questions from the members? Chairs open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McAcorin absent.
Staff member, you want to, oh, at the door. Item 15, request to approve the standard contract with San Bernardino County Flood Control District for the drainage master plan. Any questions of staff? No questions. Chairs open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McAcorin.
I may have erased my vote. Did I?
Yes, you did.
All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
Jen, item 16, request to approve execution of the memorandum of understanding with Sandbag for implementation of the countywide PACE program. PACE being property assessment clean energy.
I have a question. The, the way I read this staff recommendation, it sounds to me that if somebody wants to put in all of these energy efficient products in their home and weatherize their house for more efficiency at energy, that they would obtain a loan from the city, and that it would be paid back through property assessment, that means property taxes?
The, the one error in that is that they would not obtain a loan from the city. Sandbag will contract with a private equity firm who would provide the loan to any residents who may be interested. That would, but it would be paid back through property tax, additional property tax assessments. So let's say that, and, and part of the reason behind this is because if you've looked into solar, I have myself, the cost was, you know, $30,000 plus, and I've got to weigh, you know, how soon will I get repaid my investment through lower energy bills? And if I don't see it happening soon enough, I'm maybe not going to opt for the, for the solar. What this would allow me to do is to opt into this program and request a loan for the solar, and then the repayment comes in a term of either five to 20 years in an additional property tax assessment. So twice a year, when I get my property tax bill, it'll include this additional payment for, for the solar.
Okay, I just want to make sure that not all of us are going to pay for the one individual participating in this.
Not at all. Not at all. This is an opt-in for, available to our residents. If you approve this, if you don't want to do it, or if the residents don't want to do it, they, they don't have to, and we, we are not responsible. There's no risk to the city in, in entering into this.
So, so just to be clear, that the payback is for that particular individual who's the participant is going to pay an additional property tax?
That is correct. That is the repayment mechanism, rather than, say, a monthly if you were to go out and get the loan on your own.
Good question.
Here's, here's my question. When they, when they buy those solar panels and install them, they get a income tax credit. Is the loan going to be for the gross amount of the installation cost? Is it going to be net of the tax credit? Because that's money back in their pocket. It's going to be different for different people, but.
Yeah, and I don't have that level of detail on the program. I, I don't know that anybody does at this point, to be honest. So I, I cannot answer that question for you. Certainly, I can find out.
I'd be interested in knowing.
Yeah, I'll definitely find out and get it to the council. This is a, essentially a no-risk item to the city. Doesn't involve city funds at all. It simply allows the opportunity for our residents, should they choose, to do these, these types of improvements. The, the thinking behind this is that if I'm going to, if I end up selling my house before I feel like I've, you know, recouped my investment, the new owner then assumes those, those property taxes, gets the benefit of that solar, and also has to, to assume those payments on, on his or her property tax bill at that point.
And it's Sandbag's program, so maybe my question isn't even relevant for our purposes.
Well, really, it's a good question for information. I don't know that it, that it should affect the decision that's made tonight necessarily, but it's certainly an interesting question.
Why, if it's not going to have anything to do with our city or staff time or, or money, why are we approving it?
It's essentially Sandbag, a lot of other counties, a lot of other regions have a council of governments. Sandbag is not strictly a council of governments. They are transportation agency. When things like this come up, a lot of times they would be handled by a council of governments because it's, it's more of a regional issue. In this case, Sandbag has volunteered to assist their member entities, which we're one, as are all cities, in implementing this program so that it's, it's fair, it's equitable, it's a larger program that, that can be more successful because it shares the risk pool amongst additional property owners.
I think it's important to know that this memorandum of understanding, if approved by the city council, allows the county, allows Sandbag to proceed, but it does not obligate the city, the citizens, in any way to be responsible for that debt. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Come right on up. Please, we know your name because I have a card, Jerry, but please give your name again, and then go ahead and speak on item number 16.
Now, this is a thing between the city and the county, right?
No, sir.
Sandbag, Sandbag.
Okay. Now, remember, Jerry Brown, a few years ago, we're talking about San Bernardino County too, right? Years ago, forced the county, we had three that voted on it, one actually went, did the right way. The rest of them, two were out of town, the rest of them voted for it. He blacked out mail us into a financial situation with energy. Now, yeah, we have, we've had global warming, up and down for thousands of years, but I want to make sure the city is not tied to any financial situation with San Bernardino County on electrical cars or anything else. And when we need more windmills, we got plenty of those around if we want them. If this is tied into Jerry's Brown, when he was Attorney General, and forced our county into stuff, and our county supervisor didn't have the guts to stand up against him, if that's part of that system, I'm against it, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for, to repeat for the council and the public's information, this is a benefit to the residents of Victorville, that by approving this, the council will allow the residents to participate in. There is no obligation on the part of the city. There is no financial commitment on the part of the city, or the county. The county is a party to this, only because there are areas in the county that are outside of city limits, and those residents can participate as well. It is completely optional for our residents, but in order for our residents to be eligible, it must be approved by the city council.
Thank you. No.
I do have a question. And I think this is for you, Mr. Robertson. In the event that the, a person that actually had the solar system installed decides they want to sell their property, of course, you know, it's going to increase the value of the property.
Yes.
But yet, they are not going to pay off the amount that it costs to install it. So he, in other words, he's going to be gaining money.
He could potentially gain money. The, the main reason why this was brought up and has been a popular program was because the opposite is also true. If you were to invest in a solar facility, you then, and you needed to sell your property for whatever reason, say you got transferred, had to move, whatever, you then have to attempt to get your, recoup your investment in the cost of the house that you sell. And what this does is it transfers the, both the savings of, of the power, your power savings, so the amount that your electricity bill has gone down, and also the responsibility to continue the payments to the new owner.
Right. But what I'm saying is, you sell the home for more money because it has this solar system, but you are not obligated to pay back the full amount that's still owed on it. So the new owner is the one that's going to be responsible to pay it off.
Yes, that is correct.
Even though he's buying the house for more money.
That, that is correct, and it would be the new owner's obligation to research that home and, and look at those, you know, two inches, three inches of paperwork to see that he's got a property tax assessment that is paying for that, for that solar on into the future.
This would normally be an arms-length transaction between seller and buyer, and of course, when you go through any kind of a title insurance or trust or anything, it's going to come out. So the, the buyer, unless they didn't go through a title company, or didn't have title insurance, the buyer would always know that there is, in a sense, a lien on the property for that amount. No further questions? Chairs open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcorin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Written communications, item 17, presentation of a request to approve a professional consultant and services agreement for classification of compensation to city services, project number JM 13-027. This was the item that the city council held the workshop on.
Motion by Mayor Protem McAcorin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 18, I have spoken with Michelle Medina. She would like to continue with the Community Services Advisory Committee at my request. She has agreed to do that. I looked earlier for, to see if she was here, but she did agree with the council's approval to reappoint Michelle Medina.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 19. I think a lot of you folks have been waiting for this. This matter was, I believe, isn't this your item? Yes, was brought to the city council's attention by Councilmember Vias. It was brought actually by another individual back.
It was actually my request.
It was at your request, I'm sorry. Okay. And so this is placed on the council agenda as a written communication item. However, we know there's a lot of individuals that would want to speak on this, and I know that we have council members who have comments, but we will, we will take the comments first. I don't know how many people want to speak on this, but I have the card from Mr. Glasper, and as far as I know, that's the only individual that's going to speak, although we're, okay, if you have a card, please break it up and give it to the city clerk. And while, and do quietly, we appreciate it. We appreciate your input. We appreciate your participation. I'd ask Mr. Glasper to go ahead and come forward, since that was the first card I received. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city managing staff. I come before you to appeal to you to act favorably upon this request, number 19, to honor this great civil rights leader. It reminds me of something that was said by a former council member and mayor of this city, Terry Caldwell, when he gave a speech one time talking about the city of Victorville. Said Victorville was a symbol, was a symbolism of a diamond. It was shining, it's the shining city in the Victor Valley. And I appeal to you tonight to act upon that status that he laid upon the city of Victorville to be the first in this Victor Valley, to honor this great civil rights leader. There's not a city up here in this Victor Valley that has a street named in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King. And I think that this would be the time to act. He always said in some of his speeches, his time is now. Now is the time to act. And I appeal upon you to follow some of his great speeches and instructions, that this is the time to act. It's been way too long, almost 45 years since his death. And a lot of cities throughout this great nation has honored this great civil rights leader by naming some great streets or thoroughfares in their cities after him. So that being said, I ask that you act favorable on item number 19. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glasper. Next card is Melvin Bray.
Afternoon, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking on the kids' behalf, you know. It's supposed to be a diversity community, and these kids want to see something change in the community. So that'll be a great change for the community and the kids, you know?
Thank you for your comments. Abdullah Talib.
Good evening. I begin with the name of Allah, the beneficent, the merciful. This is my first time attending a city council meeting anywhere. I moved here to the Victor Valley back in 2003, excuse me, from Maryland, and I've lived all over the country. I'm also a small business owner here in the Victor Valley. I own a retail clothing store out in Old Adelanto. I reside in Hesperia. I've been active in some politics, most recently with the first election of President Barack Obama. I was a precinct captain. Why I wanted to speak on this motion this evening is because one of the great lessons that I learned about the Victor Valley in my work as a precinct captain for Barack Obama's campaign is the, and it's mirrored here tonight, that none of my people are represented on the city council. And oftentimes, when it comes around for election season, and I see the various lawn signs out, I don't know anything about any of you. So I also say it's nice to meet and see all of you this evening. But why I think you should do this motion is because as one of the other gentlemen, the other gentleman said before me, is that there's no thoroughfares or streets named for Dr. King. But in addition to that, I think that it would go a long way to show an adversity in the high desert where there can be a perception of a lack of diversity. I think it's a small request to ask, but I think the impact and the effect could be greater than the asking. So I think that even if you are not able to connect to it on a personal level, given all of your cultural backgrounds, that you have the sympathy and the understanding to reach deeper. I think it's also a moral issue. Dr. King quoting Dante said in one of his speeches that the hottest places in hell are reserved for those who in a time of moral crisis maintain their neutrality. What he was saying in that is that when you have the opportunity to do what is right, you should do what's right. And in fact, in one of his quotes, he said, you should do what is right just because it's right. The time is always right to do what's right. So I won't take up any more of your time, but I thank you for indulging me. And I think that you could feel some sense of responsibility for something great having been done here in the high desert by voting yes on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have two additional cards now. LaShonda Baker.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a, we don't have a motion to be acted on tonight. I just want everybody to understand that.
Yeah, okay.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is LaShonda Baker. I live here in the high desert. I've been here for about eight years. The reason, this is my first time attending a council meeting, and I'm here to support, name of the street after Dr. Martin Luther King. I think that's a brilliant idea. I really appreciate you for coming up with that. It just really means a lot to us because of our children. They need to know more about it, and once they start seeing it, you know, that'll make them ask more questions, you know. From all the children here in Victorville, I think that would be a great idea. And it just really means a lot to me, and I was really happy to come out here to support, to have it done. I appreciate every last one of you guys. Have a blessed day.
Thank you. Mr. Laws?
For many years, I was against Martin Luther King Jr. because of the affiliation of some of the communist members on the march. But over the years, I've learned to respect and love the man. The only reason I would, the laws would be changed if we put a sign up on his name. The only reason I would, the laws would be changed if we put a sign up on his name. The only thing I would request, we don't change any signs of people that we've already honored that are on our signs, that we have names on them, would be that after you put his name on it, and if you decide to approve it, that you put under his name, almost in the same legibility, practice what he taught or practice what he preached. That'll be more than just any old sign of Martin Luther King Jr. down the highway. And they see that little extra say, "Practice what he preached, practice what he taught." Something along that effect would be appreciative. I'm not happy with the leadership in this country that use Martin Luther King in the wrong ways. They do it all the time. I won't go into any detail. The black brothers and sisters I love want to make sure we practice what he preached, not what some of them are doing today in our government, in our communities, in our lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. At this point in time, I know that almost every council member that's been up here has received input from... Okay, we have another individual, go ahead. From groups and individuals in the community, I have. And one of the concerns is that if we move forward with this, and I haven't discussed this with the council, Mr., I'm sorry, I can't read the first name, Cornelius Bray?
No, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. That, as soon as we close this as the last speaker, we're going to refer this to the city manager to discuss or to enlighten us a little bit on some of the problems that have been brought to our attention by current businesspeople, not opposed to it, but really concerned of what their cost might be to change, how do they do it, who's affected by it. So immediately after the last speaker, and I think you're the individual that's the last one...
Yes, I want to clarify something. The ideal came up at the NWACP meeting, and I bring it up to them about why it's not a Martin Luther King Boulevard. And Carlos was running for campaign, and I guess he shared it with you guys, but the ideal came from me. I just want to let everybody know that.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Was there anyone else? Did I miss anyone? Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when this first came up before the council back in, I think it was November, but I'm not entirely sure, Councilmember Rothschild brought up a good point, and that has to do with changing the name of a street. And I know in Hesperia, when they attempted to change the name of a street, they had a lot of complaints about that from business owners who would have to get new letterhead, new cards, new, new everything. So in the event the council directs staff to work on a policy, to work on adding Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. as the name of a street, certainly staff would request to, that we find a way to avoid that, that situation to where people don't, aren't negatively impacted, because we don't want that to be the effect. The council currently, I have not been able to find any policy regarding the naming of streets. We do have, we have done a little bit of research on this regarding the potential for naming the interchange. And Mayor Pro Tim McEchrin, I don't know if you want to talk to that or if you want me to, I'm fine either way. It looks like you've got, you've got your email handy there, so I'll pass it over to the Mayor Pro Tim, but I just want to tell the council that typically, in something like this, you would direct staff to research this item and come back with a recommendation. Should the council choose to support this request, that's exactly what we will do. We've got a lot of other cities that have got either naming policies or already have named a street after Dr. King. And we could very easily, within a matter of weeks, bring back a very comprehensive policy based on whatever direction you give us tonight.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I, there are two options that I believe that are feasible before us. The practicality of renaming Hesperia Road to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard is impractical at best because of how it would affect the business community. But we could look to our master street plan and streets that have not been built out and look to name a main thoroughfare in the future after him. But rather, I know it has been brought up to me by members of the community that we look to name the interchange in his honor. And this body can direct staff to look into that possibility. But I did check with Sandbag today on that possibility, and it actually requires state legislation that has to be signed by the governor. We as a body can't actually authorize that. So part of what I would ask in a motion is to ask staff to look at either or of those possibilities, and if it's, if it's feasible, to ask our assemblyman or state senator to introduce legislation that would, I would hope would enjoy the support of everyone here in the audience, to ultimately get through both houses up in our state legislature and ultimately to the governor's desk to be signed, then what you could potentially see is the interchange named in remembrance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And those signs would actually go up on I-15 freeway on either side, both southbound and northbound. That to me seems more feasible and more immediately plausible. We could name a street in the future that has not been built, but again, that could be a decade or more before we'd actually see that. So I think, you know, in the, in the spirit of, of doing this, ask staff to look at both possibilities and bring back to the council whichever makes the most sense.
Other comments from council members?
I agree with that.
Kennedy? Yeah, I, I'd like to see staff do this, but I think it makes sense personally to get some members of the community involved in this as well. And that's, that can be a real problem for staff to deal with community committees, but this might be one where it would really be warranted. My reaction to the comment that because there is not a black council member, my people are not represented, I want to say that every black person, along with every white person, every Asian person, every Hispanic person, every American Indian in this community is represented by me. I can promise that, I would always commit to that. So I, I don't think that's, that's so much the issue, but I believe the community ought to get involved in this process because once you start down this path, think of this, it doesn't just involve Dr. King, there may be others. And I think there, the city needs to develop policy about how to approach this, I think that's important. But I, I'm a, I graduated from high school in nineteen sixty-three. Anybody remember nineteen sixty-three? I'm a child of that era. A lot of us are. He's one of the most memorable people in my lifetime. So, believe me, I think we need to take this seriously, and I hope we can come to a good resolution on this. But I'd like to see the community involved.
Thank you, Councilman. I know that Mr. Glasper can share with you that this is a diverse community, we've worked with the black community for a long time, we have great working relationships. For those who don't know, Mr. Jim Busby was elected to this council three times, served as mayor twice. And so I think that, that in itself may not prove diversity, but I think the recommend, I think that the history of this city, we're a very diverse community. We know that every one of you are sincere. We don't want to take an action that's going to look like this is put off. We don't want to take an action that looks like we're dragging our feet. But one of the members in, in your audience talked to me before the meeting and said, "Please can this be referred back so that we can have greater input from our community?" His church hasn't discussed it, the African-American chamber has not discussed it. What we want is input from the broadest group of people that we can have input. This is a very important item, we're going to take this extremely important. And one of the, one of the difficult things to do when we talk about now is the requirement for the interchange because it takes the state's permission to do it. On the other hand, unless you wait for a new street in the future, it's the least intrusive to homeowners and businesspeople because there is no address on the interchange. But you do get the most visibility because of the freeway signage and the name on the interchange itself. I know that each and every council member is taking this seriously. I know we want to move forward very rapidly. I know I've been requested to meet with some individuals in the community to talk about this, and I believe that listening to the council, they're all serious. I heard no negative comments that's opposed to this, but we need input from the staff, and we need to see if we can shorten the time up in case we do go for an interchange. And as we, as one of the members here pointed out, this will not be the last. There are other members who deserve having some kind of naming, and we need to get a policy very quickly on this from the staff. And rather than refer it to the staff and forget it, I would like to refer this to the staff based upon all the comments, the input from the audience, with a fairly rapid feedback, even if it's an informal feedback without the decision, so that this doesn't lag. Is that acceptable to the council? If so, I don't think this requires a motion. It's clearly the council's interested, it's clearly the city council wants to cooperate, clearly the city council needs your input and your organizations, and staff will begin to work on this immediately. Any other comments from the council members? Thank you very, very much for your input. And also, don't forget that if you have additional input or recommendations, call us, email us, send a letter. We're here to serve all, everyone, and we do so because we understand that role, and we do want your input. So thank you very much, those individuals who spoke, and for those individuals who came down for the first time to watch the proceedings. Item twenty. This is an item that's placed on the agenda, I believe this one is yours, isn't it, Councilmember Vias? On the Victorville Library, it's not an action, but it's a discussion. The city, the city of Victorville's library was a part of the Free County Library System. Some time ago, staff will have to enlighten me, they chose to withdraw. We currently have a Victorville Library, although we work in cooperation with, with the county of San Bernardino. And I don't know exactly why this was raised, but I had raised the question, why does Apple Valley and Hesperia and Phalen and Pinion Hills have a new library and we don't? On the other hand, let me say that I have been to the library, I have used the library, and we have a wonderful bunch of individuals, don't want them to get offended by this discussion. They really go above and beyond to satisfy all the clients that come in there, and I personally want to thank them. Comments from the council?
Well, I was hoping to hear what our options were and about the lighting.
Sure. The, let me give a little bit of a history lesson in response to Mr. Cox's comment slash question. In, I want to say it was probably about two thousand five, two thousand six timeframe, the volunteers at the library had contacted several council members inquiring about increasing the level of service, putting money into the library, both from a physical standpoint and also from a service standpoint. Ultimately, the council discussed it, and in two thousand seven, decided, voted to take over the, the library from the county. The thought process at the time was that the council wanted to infuse about, I think it was about two hundred thousand dollars a year into the library, and because of trust issues between the county and the city that have been around for years, they did not want to give money directly to the county. Additionally, the county charges, I believe it's a twenty-eight percent administrative fee on, on all funds, and so they didn't want to end up paying twenty-eight percent of that two hundred thousand dollars, or fifty-two thousand dollars, if my math was quick enough, maybe fifty-six, to the county for effectively doing nothing. So the, the direction from the council was to pursue taking over the library and forming the library district. In doing so, the council was able to increase the level of funding for the library when the funding was available during the mid-two thousands, when Victorville had extra money in the budget. I will tell you that over the last three or four years, the library has endured probably deeper cuts than most of the other departments because they have a, a funding source that is set aside in the property tax. And up until last year, they still had a very small portion of money that they received from the general fund. This year's budget, in order to make our balanced budget, the library is operating one hundred percent on the property tax that's received for library purposes. So you are right, Mr. Cox, we are operating the library in an extremely efficient manner with a very competent staff of one full-time person, a lot of part-timers who, who work very hard, and a lot of volunteers who also donate tremendous number of hours to, to the city and to the citizens of Victorville. So this item kind of showed up on the agenda. I think it's more related to, or originally was more related to kind of the physical aspects of the library, the lighting, the, the private road that has always been a, kind of a point of contention because it appears to be a city issue, and it's, it's, we aren't even allowed by law to maintain it, unfortunately. So it, it, that is a very difficult issue. Councilmember Vias agendas this based on comments from the public regarding the lighting. So I've asked our Director of Community Services, Christian Gunter, to, to prepare at least a few comments, just simply a status update on where are we with, with some of these issues. For a future, much larger library, we actually have in our development impact fees, plans for a larger library. Because of the timing, as to when we took over the library district, that occurred literally right at the end of the big boom in development. So there's not a whole lot of money that's been saved up for that. But years into the future, as we add residents, as we add residences to our city, they will pay, a portion of their development impact fees will go towards a, a larger, more luxurious library. I would hope that at no time do we ever eliminate the library that we have now. That library is the highest circulation rate for the entire county library system, even though we are technically out of the system, we still partner with the county. You can check out books from anywhere in the county through the Victorville Library, and it is, even though it's small, even though it may not be as pretty as, as what you see next door, they're actually doing a heck of a lot, almost said the wrong word, they're a heck of a lot more business because it's in a location where there are residents who need library services more so than, than maybe you or I, who typically might be on the internet or, or have other means to go to a bookstore and buy a book. It's in old town, needs to stay in old town so that those families who, who can't afford to go out and buy books can go to the library and borrow them. Mr. Gunter?
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Please give full name of the department, please.
My name is Christian Gunter. I am the Acting Director for Community Services. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for hearing me today. The library itself is, started off in nineteen seventy as a seventy-three hundred square foot building. Approximately two thousand and eight, some additional construction was done, closing the atrium and creating a computer lab with twenty-one computers in it. Since that time, those computers, I don't think they've stopped a single time. Our volunteers from the library can probably confirm that, as well as our city librarian, Karen Everett, who's here tonight as well. So that being said, at that time, there were a number of different things adjusted at the library. The bathrooms were reconstructed, the computer lab was added, a meeting room was added, and a storage room was added, totaling approximately nine thousand square feet for the city library. Just recently, the external lights around the library were improved, going from high pressure sodium lights to the metal halide lights, which increases actually the amount of light that is given off by those existing light standards. As we all know, budgets have been cut, we have not put any additional light standards in that vicinity. The west side of the library is, has, I believe it's two small supply lights that are outside of the library property on the private road that exists there on the west side of the property. But other than that, all of the lighting in the area is provided by lighting directly around the library. I have asked staff as far as the improvement to the lighting, if it has improved, they've said yes. Not a lot, but they've said yes. Let's see, in terms of the overall use of the library, averages over the last four years have been approximately one hundred and ninety-seven thousand people attending the library per year. That works out to about six hundred and thirty-one people a day on average. Participants in programs and classes at the library, that averages about thirty-four people a day at the library. I understand yesterday there were no chairs available at the library, it's that busy. It's that busy. In terms of safety at the library, police calls, I actually checked with our new police chief, Sam Lucchia, and Captain Sam Lucchia, forgive me, who provided me some basic statistics on recent calls over the last six months, I believe it is. From June through December of 2011, there were 15 calls with two reports taken over at the library, and for the same period in 2012, there were eight calls taken. So, the number of calls has actually gone down. One report was taken out of those calls. For the period basically from the end of December until the present, they've had two calls for service last year and one report taken. This year, there have been three calls for service and no reports taken. So, generally, the library itself, as mentioned, we have one city librarian. We currently have nine part-time staff members working at the library. Normally, at this time of year, we'd be about 12. So, we're very short-staffed. We're very busy, and we're here to help the community. So...
I think that me agendizing this, it put everybody on the defense. That wasn't the purpose of agendizing it.
Right.
The purpose was, how do we improve the library to serve more people so people aren't standing and waiting for a computer? And how do we get more lighting so people feel safer and want to attend the library? And how do we get that road fixed? I know when I first started at VBWA, Shea Road, I remember we agendized it to give it to the city, and the reason why we did that was so that you would maintain it. So, you adopted that road to maintain it. So, why can't we do the same with that other road?
That private road, there is some history that it was before I was working for the city, so it's more than 10 years old, that there was some contention between the property owner, who's actually owns the business that that road kind of bends around, not allowing that, not dedicating it to the city. If he were to dedicate it to the city, we could then start to maintain it.
Okay. Well, if this business is not cooperating, but yet he's causing people to get hurt, or it's a safety issue because of the potholes or the condition of the road, why not, can't we use the neighborhood stabilization funds to fix that road?
Well, the neighborhood stabilization funds are specifically for housing. There are options, though, and I don't want to say that the property owner today is being difficult in any way. I don't think that this property owner's even been approached in recent years at all. This is just some old history that, you know, we attempted to acquire the road, and we're told no, and, you know, we're certainly, if it's the council's direction, to go that way and to try to acquire that road through some means, whether that is a negotiation, and simply an offer, or even potentially a condemnation action to take the road because it's been used as a road. The road is posted, just for risk-management purposes, the road is posted as a private road and not maintained by the city, so we do attempt to cover ourselves. But certainly, there is some risk on the part of the property owner.
I would like to see this council contact the owner of that road and say, you know, either you fix it or you lose it, you know? But we need to have the city looking well, and we need to have the city working well.
Agreed.
And that includes our roads.
Agreed.
That's a very good point.
Christian.
That could provide a very good increased access to the library and improve the people's image of our library because getting to it is a little difficult. I think it's a very good point. Some years ago, there was a request by the city to take the road, and the person who held the first trustee wasn't willing to allow to be give up without renegotiating the loan, and the owner couldn't do that. It really didn't go anyplace, but it wasn't the owner's fault at that time. Things have changed. Ownerships have changed. Now may be the perfect time to address the issue. I agree with Councilmember Vias. Refer it to staff and see if we can obtain what the cost is, the pros and cons of obtaining that road for access to the library.
I might have missed part of your comment on lighting, but I know sodium lights can be anchored to the end of an arm, and the arm can be mounted on a building, because I have three of those that are building I own in San Bernardino. And it does a great job of lighting, and it doesn't require a standard and a special foundation, and it can be wired straight out of the building. I don't know if that might be an option, but I would think it might be something we'd look at.
Be glad to look at it, sir. We would also probably look at doing something through, possibly CDBG funding here in the future. So, that's one of our goals, actually.
Yeah, just go to Home Depot and get some lights, some floodlights. This isn't difficult.
It can be a little more difficult than that, but actually, one thing to keep in mind is, and I don't have any way of verifying it from the person who made the comment three weeks ago, but the timing of the lighting improvements that Mr. Gunter has made may be such that her complaint was actually from the old lighting system because it was a recent, very recent improvement to the new lights. So, there could have been some crossover, and the improvements may have already been made, just as a matter of course.
I believe she...
Sorry. I think staff has clear direction for the council members.
Yes, sir.
And thank you, Councilmember Vias, for bringing it to our attention. Puts a spotlight on that. We'll look for some positive results. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is also brought to the city council's attention, Councilmember Vias, the pedestrian safety. And I have to admit, I'm not familiar with this at all. So, Councilmember Vias.
Vicki Mack, she has the pedestrian safety and awareness program. She has an amazing story. Is she here tonight? Yeah. This has been a great night for her. She has an amazing story of why she's affected with pedestrian safety, and she wants to make awareness known. And I would just like our city staff to help her, and I'd like to direct our Public Relations Department to work with her and maybe allowing them to use our emblems, because we've had a lot of children and people hurt in our city from lack of pedestrian safety.
Good point. This matter then referred to our city manager, and he will follow up on that and get back to us in a timely manner. Thank you. Council reports, council committee reports, starting... Are there any council member reports?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
I don't know if anyone's aware of it, but when Rudy Cabrerales did not run for reelection, and I was the alternate on the VBWA JPA board, I moved into his position as Chair of that board in December and will serve out the remainder of that term through June. So, I've been getting my feet wet at VBWA and trying to learn as...
Careful how you say that.
What's that?
Careful how you say that.
Yeah.
That's the water you don't want your feet in.
It's our wastewater reclamation authority, so I'm not literally getting my feet wet. But just thought I'd like to bring up to date on a few things that are happening at VBWA. They've just done $16 million worth of regulatory upgrades at the plant on Shea Road, major project, and more things in the works, some energy efficiency programs going down there that are really interesting and are going to be interesting to watch. The upper Narrows interceptor replacement project is, the design work's finished, and that's going to involve bringing a new replacement, a new interceptor line on the city's side of the railroad tracks. And it's going to involve a tunneling project that is something close, yeah, sort of close to going from London to Paris under the ocean. Not quite that elaborate, but it's going to be quite a tunneling project under the cemetery in that area. 80 feet underground, by the way. And they're in the design and bidding phases for subregional plants. So, a lot going on at VBWA and a lot for everybody to be, stay tuned and pay attention to.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Item number 23, submitted by Douglas Robertson and City Manager.
I guess my name's on it, but this is simply items that the city council would like placed on the agenda for future meetings.
I have one. I think this council is familiar with Cory Lopez and her work in fighting synthetic drugs in each city. She's having a meeting at Hook for the Drug, No Drug Coalition, I think it's called, at Hook Park on February 13th, and I'd like to invite everyone so they can understand and learn about synthetic drugs and how dangerous they are and what to look for because when I first attended this, I was absolutely shocked to see that they were actually wrapping them like Reese's Peanut Butter Cups, Hershey Chocolate Bars, I mean cartoons. They're catering to children, and they're taking these drugs, and they have horrific effects on, from suicides to hurting other people to doing awful things. And I know that in the past, they've asked us to take some type of stand against it, and we have a new police captain, and I would like us to reconsider getting a little bit more involved in that as a council and seeing what we can do to put a citywide ban on those types of drugs and how we can enforce it, because I think that it's a public health and safety issue for our residents, and this is important, and I'd like to agendize that.
Okay. That'll be agendized. We'll leave that up to administration on how soon you can do it, but it is an important item.
Sure. We can certainly review the actions that came before the council, decisions made by, I think a lot of the captains got together to try to sort it out. I know they have done some public outreach. They've also issued warning letters to any businesses that were known to be selling these products, many of which took them off the shelves. And in fact, one of the best things that happened very recently was there was a store owner and a clerk that was arrested for selling these products at a shop in Phelan. And I'm confident that that publicity will have a dramatic effect on the sales of those drugs. But certainly, if the council wants to discuss it again, we can bring it back for a review and potentially additional action.
And I'd also like to see, I mean, for us to go into all the smoke shops and the different shops that are selling the bath salts and see where are we at and how, you know, how prevalent is it in our city?
Mm-hmm.
How much of an issue it is. So, I would like to do that. And I have another thing I'd like to agendize. Are you ready for that?
Go ahead.
Okay. I would like the council to consider giving our committees business cards and name tags since they're representing us in the community, such as the Planning Commission and as well as our public service, community services, so that they're well represented, each of us that we appoint, to consider maybe doing that. If we can't afford it, to also consider that maybe each individual council member pay for that for them, to our individual appointees, out of our own pockets.
That's a matter for the council. I would prefer not to have a council member have their appointee have name tags and another council person's not. But on the other hand, it's a good idea to get it resolved once and for all on who gets them and who doesn't. So, no objections. The council have no objections. Agendizes for public discussion. Any other items? No further items?
None.
Item 24, presentable for presentation of reports by staff and council members. Can't we combine these? It sounds like we're duplicating ourselves here.
There's a little bit of duplication, and certainly, if you'd like, we can combine them into one, so that you only have to call one time. I think the idea, when these came onto the agenda at different times, so they were sort of added at different times, and we've kept them separate so that we make sure that we cover each one, but if it's your desire, I don't think we even need to agendize that. We can just simply make that change. With regard to reports, I'd like to start off with a couple of things. Number one, I'd ask Mr. Bray and Mr. Glasper and anyone else who'd like to, I'd like to meet with you in the foyer after the close of the meeting, so don't run off. I'd love to meet with you to talk about the direction that we receive from council and moving forward with that. Two items with regard to reports, you'll recall a few months ago, I get the two mixed up a little bit. The opposite Amerigosas side of the freeway, Mariposa's side of the freeway was shut down for about a week as they paved the road and made the transition to the new road. That process is coming up very soon for the Amerigosas side, and I'm not announcing it yet. That's for sandbag as they get closer to that scheduled date, but it appears a lot of that changeover is going to take place in about two weeks. So, be aware of potential freeway closures that are coming up in about two weeks. Keep an eye out for those public notices. And then, of course, as always, please drive very safely, slow down as we're making those transitions, as the traffic patterns change a little bit. One more report that I would, what I would need to announce or want to announce, and then I probably need to run out of here before she kills me, but I'm very proud of our city clerk, who Saturday graduated with her bachelor's degree with honors from the Vining University.
Are you through? No, I'm sorry. That concludes the report by staff. Any reports by, any other reports by council members? You, Councilman Catherine.
Just real quick, as has been reported in the paper, the Rescue Mission, as well as a number of other organization, churches, individuals, have come together to open warming shelters when the temperature drops below 32 degrees. It's expected to drop below 32 degrees this weekend, so they're going to be opening back up the shelters. If you're interested in helping and volunteering during the evening and the nighttime, those hours, I would ask you to contact the Rescue Mission. They can always use additional volunteers, but they're looking to open up on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and possibly even Monday as the temperatures are going to drop below 32 degrees. So, they're continuing to do that great work for the homeless in our community, and I think it's an awesome thing.
Thank you, council. Any other reports?
Ladies and gentlemen... Two things. Charlie Glasper, I surely hope you are willing to participate in kind of leading the charge on this issue. You're well-known all around the community.
And respected.
You're elected. The other, Michelle Medina, my friend, is looking for some help with a Victor Valley High School girls soccer team. Don't even have sweatshirts. So, some of us have made some contributions. If you got an extra 50 bucks, contact me or contact Michelle. She's pretty easy to find. You could use the help.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes this council meeting. Thank you for being patient with us. Thank you for your participation. Thank you for your input. Have a good evening.